I believe. This is our annual open enrollment and renewal period for all of our employee benefit plans. And as you can see on the first page of background, remembering that we've had very good luck in our negotiations over several years. During the time that we've been with Blue Cross Blue Shield, we returned to them in 2005. We have had zero increases for six years, which is quite unusual as our final negotiations. And recognizing that those final renewals actually ignore our actual claims experience. We have about 96% claims credibility, and yet we've been able to get the underwriters at Blue Cross to ignore that underwriting formula. Because as you can see, the original renewals have averaged in the mid-teens, which is a typical annual increase for group health insurance during the period of time that we're talking about here. Last year, just to remember what happened last year. Last year was our first discernible increase since 2006. And you'll recall that that was 8.8%. It started out at an increase of 29%. We had a really bad year when it came to claims experience. And we got it down from 29 to 24, 18, 15, all the way down to 8.8%. And recognizing that that 8.8% increase still included last year 4.8% for affordable care, taxes, and fees. Those fees vary each and every year, but basically it was half of our final renewal increase last year. Because Blue Cross had come down so much from the initial renewal of 29, they were not willing last year, as they have been in the past, to waive those ACA fees, okay? So, you know, by allowing our renewal to be broken down so much last year and them ignoring the underwriting formula, I really took a gamble this year and prayed a lot that we had a good year. And we did. Timing is everything. Last year, and this is really important, last year, our renewal was based on a number of large claims that had ongoing diagnoses, if you remember. And they were all bunched up within like a three or four month period of time. So it was just timing. This year, I had to convince Blue Cross that that was really unusual for us and an anomaly, and that we were going to go back to a regular pattern of claims. So remembering that, this year, their annual medical inflationary trend rate, which we start out with, is a little over 9%. Our claims experience credibility, as I mentioned, is worth 96%, so we're almost completely credible. And that is the largest factor in their renewal formula. Remembering that now they don't take just our last year, they take the last two years, and they blend our claims experience. So this year, we had an improved paid loss ratio of 72%. It was 94% last year, so you can see the difference. We had only five large ongoing claims that exceeded $30,000 in payment. And that, remember, is after the medical network discounts. Those large claims were about $224,000. Yet our previous 12 months, we had 14 large claims for over $1 million. So it's very easy to compare those two time periods. No comparison at all. Also, happy to say that our insured population, in other words, the number of people on our plan, increased by 10. The lowest we've ever gotten, by the way, was in 2011. It was 177, you know, when we had a hiring freeze and we had a lot of other things going on. The 10 employees that increased the data this year when they looked at the data were not new positions, okay? They were previously unfilled positions at the time that they looked at the data. Last year, we had 10 people on COBRA extension, which always means additional claim liability because the only reason that people stay on the plan and pay a COBRA premium is because they really need the plan. This year, we only had one, so that evened out. Our demographics are still the same. I talk about them every single year. In spite of the fact that we have had eight retirements in the past year, we've had a number of employees that have moved up into the next age category. So our demographics are actually just slightly worse, but pretty much the same as they've been. And this year, our renewal, still, the final renewal that I'm going to report to you, still includes, this year, 1.8% for those affordable care fees. Now, I will tell you that I had, before we go further, a personal goal, which I try to have every year. But this year, after we incurred the 8.8% last year, my goal was to try to restore our rates to their previous level prior to the 8.8% increase. As you can see, we started out with an increase of 6%, representing almost $124,000 in increased cost to the town. As you can see, the decrements went down to zero, and then the underwriters call that their best and final, you know, refusal to go any further. Nevertheless, several weeks later, as you can see, very happy to report to you that I got as close as I could to the minus 8.8%. We are actually decreasing our health insurance rates by 7.6%, representing a little over $156,000 savings to us. And that is within $3,000 a year of what we expended as the increase last year. So it was as close as we could get. Recognizing -- thank you. Recognizing that that minus 7.6, again, still includes 1.8, you know, of the ACA fees. You know, in order to get there, really, underwriting had to ignore their underwriting formula. And again, the timing of the claims data was what I really based the negotiations on. Now, I want to just say a word of caution. And my word of caution is to have a health insurance carrier reduce their rates is a little rare, and we can't set up a future expectation that that may happen again. Timing is everything, remember? And, you know, our claims experience has been very consistent up to last year, and let's hope that it goes forward. The reason I'm bringing that up is because, you know, it is easy to look at our rate history and say, wow, maybe, you know, we shouldn't be projecting as much as a realistic increase each year. And I know we've talked about that, you know, as part of our renewal process. Again, I caution you that easily trend should be averaged at about 1%. So there you have an increase of 12% alone, and then that doesn't count the claims experience. So again, I just want to add that word of caution and go on record, you know, that it's a bit unusual to have the rates go down. And as I mentioned then, really, our health insurance rate history is sterling, including this renewal. Our 10-year average is 0.7% per year. Our five-year average is 0.6%. And when you take an average of the original renewals prior to negotiations, they average 15%. So again, you know, this can't be a future benchmark for us, but it certainly is worth Our Emeritus Dental Plan, we've been with Emeritus for many years, have been very happy with their service and the plan. This year, our claims experience, very high, started out at 13.7%. That was negotiated to a little under 9%. And then our final renewal actually is an increase of 5%. That does include 1.5% of affordable care fees, which do apply to dental insurance as well as health insurance. Even with the 5%, you can see the total cost for the town is $7,000 a year, so not a large expenditure. And certainly, 5% is under the typical dental trend, which runs around 8% a year. Also, we have to remember that in 2013, 14, and 15, we negotiated three zeros in a row for those renewals as well. So actually, this is the first increase for us on the dental since 2012. I want to talk about the future of our dental plan for a few moments, though. When we started out at 13.7% this year, I did a lot of investigation on the claims experience. And what I discovered, which wasn't a big surprise, we've had a freedom, a total freedom of choice dental plan. That is, it's not a managed care plan. It doesn't incentivize, benefit-wise, people to go to the in-network dentists, okay? It allows any employee and any dependent to go to any dentist of their choice. Now, we identify for them the in-network dentists each year, but when I looked into this, they're not going to the in-network dentists, okay? Out of the top 50 dentists used in the past year, 27 of those dentists were out of network, okay? So that is what is driving the utilization of the dental plan. And there is a 25% to 30% discount between what is charged to the employee as well as what is reimbursed to the insurance company, the difference between in-network and out-of-network, just like a health insurance managed care plan works, okay? So it is our goal in the near future, perhaps in a year, perhaps in a few years, to move into a managed care dental plan. In order to do that comfortably for our employees, we have distributed and identified all of the dentists in the area, and specifically the dentists that are being used that are out of network, in the hopes that we're giving employees plenty of time to recognize that, you know, there are a lot of new dentists, there are some Aspen Dental, there are a lot of new clinics that are making, you know, the dental practice much more competitive. And there is a time when we're going to, you know, go to a managed care dental plan. So I did feel that it was appropriate to inform you that that really is our goal at this point with the dental plan.
And Mayor and Council, Karen and I have spoken to all the employees over Monday and Tuesday. We've met with all the different departments and employee groups, and essentially rolled out that in about three years, we're going to go to the managed plan. It gives them plenty of time to make the adjustments, and hopefully Karen did a good job of pointing out why it was important to do this, and that they will start morphing over to dentists that are part of the plan. So, but within three years, we will be making that move.
Thank you, Larry. This is just good, sound, future planning, you know? We've made a lot of good decisions along the way, and this is just another one to ensure that we have, you know, the best possible package that we can have. Any questions about the dental situation?
Questions? Mike?
Yeah, I have a question. A couple of questions. One is, what's the population of our employees who take advantage of the dental? It's not mandatory, right?
Well, that's a very good question, and I have that. Oh, yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. We, as the town, pay 100% for the employee cost, and then a percentage of the dependent cost.
Right.
And so we have 200 on the dental plan, and we actually have 121 families on the dental plan, and that's more than we have on the health plan. Of course, you're talking about, you know, a great deal of difference in premium, yes. It's a good question.
The attraction to non, I guess, network, is that because of cost?
You know, I tried to discern a pattern. If people were perhaps using out-of-network dentists because of specialists that maybe weren't available in network, you know, that would be your first thought. No, no. Because a lot of the utilization was to regular dentists. I think it's familiarity, yeah.
Yeah, I was also going to add from our meetings with employees, some of them did not realize that there was a difference between out-of-network and in-network.
Hold the microphone low to you.
They felt just like that because all dentists take the card and accept the insurance card, that they didn't recognize that there was a difference. And so we helped explain to them that even though they take that insurance, it's actually costing you more as well as the plan more because they're not providing you that 30% discount, if you will. So it was an educational opportunity with our employees.
Yeah, Karen, thank you. And, and you know, that's in spite of the fact that we have annual employee meetings, which Karen and I, you know, remind everybody, you know, we have the carriers come. And, but, you know, people just don't remember it, you know? Like Karen said, they just, so that's excellent news, really. That's excellent news and gives us hope that we're going to change this around for sure. Also, you know, I have asked Emeritus to initiate contacting the out-of-network dentists to see if, in fact, you know, they would agree to join the network. Of course, it's less reimbursement to them, you know, but we shall see, you know, when employees and patients make the statement that this is what's going to happen. We'll see how much influence that is. Any other questions about the dental situation? And then our basic group life insurance, I've been, we came off a three-year, a previous three-year guarantee which expired this year. I was able to get another two-year guarantee. So now those rates are guaranteed until 2018. And finally, the town's annual cost. As you can see, employee and dependent were saving a little over $156,000, that is rates that are decreasing. And the total dental increase is a little over $7,000. So our annual, and then of course, the life insurance is staying the same, the UNOM LTD and STD, I was able to get zeros on those, and even though our rate guarantees were expiring. So the bottom line is that our annual cost is going down about $150,000 a year.
Awesome. That's wonderful.
As always, the executive summary, going into more detail, is attached, that you can read at your leisure. And then just one other thing, you know, last year, we implemented an employee assistance program as part of our benefit package. And just wanted to mention that we have, are planning definitely to add additional onsite seminars and presentations each quarter, which is a part and parcel of that program. And we certainly want to take advantage of those services and maximize our, you know, our educational components of that EAP. And of course, Karen has had a lot of experience with particular situations where the EAP has really come in handy in this past year. Any questions about anything that we've reviewed?
Mary, question?
I just, you always do a fabulous job, and you work so hard for all the employees and for the town to do the best amounts of savings, and you just, and just so appreciate you. I just want you to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That means a lot to me. Thank you.
Marty?
Yeah, first, I just want to say you are a miracle worker, and your efforts are definitely appreciated. My one question is, do any of these medical plans transfer over to a retiree? Do they get a break if they maintain the same insurance? Or do they lose it and have to start all over again?
Very good question. We do not have retiree insurance. That's the answer. So the answer is, they go to an individual plan, and it has nothing to do with our group health plan.
Has any efforts been made? Because if they get in on a group plan as a retiree, there are certain benefits and discounts that might be available. I know I'm in a group plan for my retirement, and I'm paying a lot less than what anybody else pays for the exact same insurance.
From an underwriting perspective, and this is hard to report, but it's the truth, group health plan carriers are extremely reluctant to have retirees on a plan, and they will raise rates accordingly. It is, it changes the whole favorability of our plan. And I have had to take those benefits away from some accounts, and it's extremely difficult, you know, to take something away once they've had it. And that's been my experience over 30 years, unfortunate as it is. Now, you know, ACA has expanded, you know, some choices for people. You know, there's no pre-existing condition limitations anymore. You know, Medicare allows a number of Medicare supplements. You know, there are a lot of choices now that weren't available previously. That's a real good question.
Yeah, Councilman Grossman, the days where your employer covers your insurance premium after you have retired are gone. That's a thing of the past, quite frankly. And there are a number of labor bargaining units, especially in the Midwest and the East Coast, that are trying to get out of those agreements and contracts just because of the cost. And there are options, as Barbara said, but in terms of what it would do to our very small organization that is being represented and underwritten, it would kill us.
I also wanted to add to that for us, though, and remind us that we do offer a Retirement Health Savings Account, and employees have been contributing 1%. The town's been contributing 1% as well. We're recommending to increase that to 2% from the town, so a total of 3%. And employees have been very appreciative when they are leaving our organization. They oftentimes have a balance of 10 to almost $20,000 in their RHS, and that helps them with their transition into an individual plan when they separate with us. And with Affordable Care Act, many of them have been very excited about the kind of insurance they're able to afford, and then the RHS pays that for them for, you know, several long years, three, five, seven years even.
Thank you. That's really good to know that there's a transition period and there's some carryover.
Yeah.
You know, because that is a difficult, I mean, going from being fully covered and not paying anything or close to nothing, and then getting hit that monthly bill. I mean, that's...
And then we do have a portable carryover for, on life insurance. So some employees, when they leave us, do convert their life insurance policy over to an individual plan. Yeah. Barb has finished the presentation, but yet, any last questions yet for Barb before we go on with just the operational information?
Any more questions, anyone?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of questions. One was, what were the five top claims that we had that, you know, wasn't as bad as last year?
Barb could probably speak better to that.
Yeah.
Diagnostically?
They'd probably wear uniforms, right?
Oh, I...
Could you use the microphone?
No, we actually, HIPAA doesn't allow, excuse me, the HIPAA law doesn't allow identifying claims as far as employee versus dependent, and certainly, you know, as far as any kind of identification departmental-wise, it just is not done. The most, the most identification, you know, are claims reports that tells me, you know, how much was inpatient facility versus outpatient facility and doctor's office visits. It categorizes that. It does give me, on a confidential basis, as your broker, it does give me some vague diagnostic categories, but that's as finely tuned as it gets. And that is considered unrepeatable. You know, it's given by the underwriters. And HIPAA, you know, Big Brother, you know, it's all labeled confidential. It helps me to try to determine if those are ongoing claims or not, because part of my negotiations are to prove that they're not.
Right.
You know, and to say, that was an anomaly, you know, that was an accident, that's not going to be repeated, that employee perhaps, you know, and this is a guess, because I don't know who the employees are, perhaps, you know, that employee was termed, you know, it's a, it's a lot of, it becomes a puzzle that we try to put together, Karen and I, as best as we can, but with very limited information.
Well, what, yeah, I got that, actually.
That was...
What is the, what is the breakdown then between outpatient and inpatient?
For our large claims, 49% of the, excuse me, 10% of the paid claims, close to 11% were inpatient, 32 and a half percent were outpatient facilities, and about 39% were physician's office visits.
Okay.
And then prescription medication, 17%, because scripts are included in there, and that would give us the 100%.
Okay.
Hope that helps.
Is there any, and my last question, is uncertainty due to the ACA? Or are we at a point now where that's leveling off or stabilizing? Or is there still increases on the horizon for, for that to anticipate?
With what's happening in this country right now politically, that is a real loaded question.
Yeah.
Ask us, yeah. But as far as it's stabilizing in the last year and for the next 12 months, I would say that's a fair statement to make. There has been another tax, which I haven't even brought up, Karen is very familiar with it. It's called a Cadillac tax, and that was hanging over everybody's head, but it's now been postponed. And that basically, as part of ACA, said, we want you to have a certain level of benefits, and if you go past those benefits that we clearly defined by a formula, you're going to pay extra tax as an employer. And that Cadillac tax has been postponed until 2020. It was to go into effect 2018. Who knows what's going to happen to ACA by 2020, the way things are going? That's the best I can tell you.
That's right. Thank you. Any other questions? Barbara, thank you again for a good job. Job well done.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Karen, you're back up.
All right. Just a few more points that I wanted to share with you regarding operational information and our objectives for the new year and human resources. So I'm on page 676 and 677 for us. We have four major objectives that we want to accomplish in the new year, and how they've impacted our budgets are as follows. Well, first of all, turnover, as we've always been discussing the last couple of years. Our highest turnover was two years ago at 21%, but we have been able to bring that down and stabilize right at about 16%. So you'll notice in line item 3207, personnel testing, that there's an additional $4,000 in there. So for me, that's a lot of, that's a big increase, $4,000. And that is to help us expand our recruitment initiatives, expand our prescreening and testing of candidates. We're also going to be doing more training with supervisors on how to hire right the first time, so to speak, to help us manage turnover and keep that as low as possible. So that explains that expenditure there. Second objective is to focus on safety, wellness, and employee development programs. This past year, we implemented a new employee orientation program that's been very successful. We're very pleased with that, such that in the new year, we would like to do something similar with a supervisor program, so new supervisor orientation. So when we hire a new supervisor, or we promote an individual for the first time into a supervisory role, that will be able to afford an academy, if you will. role, that we'll be able to afford, an academy, if you will, of six class sessions that they can come to and hear about how to handle the new role of a supervisor, from everything from performance management to employee law, how we handle absenteeism and so forth. So we're looking forward to that. I'm also working with the library, the police department, and Parks and Recreation in their performance management initiatives. We'll be enhancing their performance factors and how they talk to their employees about expectations and that growth and development factor. This is going to be our year to do biannual sexual harassment training. Since I arrived now five years ago, we've kind of changed this biannual training to be all-inclusive with respectful workplace training. I've facilitated those each of the last few times we've done this. I always like to mix it up to try to keep employees' interest. So you'll see in line item 5255, an increase of almost $6,000, $5,680. Oh, excuse me, I'm on the wrong finger line here. 3204 is the expenditure line, and it's $4,000, and that's all for that training. As Barb mentioned, we have services now through the Employee Assistance Program with very qualified and professional speakers, professional speakers, and so we're going to be using them to help us with that component, as well as a few other classes with those funds. Okay, and then, safety is actually a reduction that I wanted to point out in line 5255. This past year, I had to actually transfer and revise my budget, add monies to work comp losses. I didn't want that to alarm you. The overall claims are about the same, but we had two very large claims, and they were in the police department, as Councilman Whiting had mentioned. And so I do believe that those are anomaly, and so I reduced that budget line for next year by $5,600. Okay? Our third objective for the new year is retirement planning. The mayor had mentioned, along with council, during our budget retreats of his concerns, are we doing enough for our employees for their retirement? And so we have already placed on the schedule a heightened education component, quarterly financial education for our employees through various partners that we have, including ICMA. At all of our department meetings on Monday and Tuesday, we made a point of reminding employees of our new EAP program, the Employee Assistance Program, that it has a financial component to it, gave them the contact information, and told them, "Don't be like Prince. You know, don't leave me without a will in place. Contact the EAP. You can be connected with a local attorney for a free consultation and get a will put together and other estate planning." So we've put that out for them, and then again, the 1% increase to the Retirement Health Savings Account. Then fourth and last focus for the new year in Human Resources is to do with managing our compensation. So in the handouts that I gave you, I wanted to provide you a little explanation of so many changes this year in the pay plan that we haven't seen for a while. The first initiative on the handout is something that you probably heard if you were at the chamber meeting. I spoke to the group there that day about the Department of Labor anticipated rule changes on overtime exemption. This week, I've learned that that is looking to, is even more promising to get pushed through. There's that climate to get it done and out to employers before there's any change in the White House. So we're anticipating the final rule to be published in the next two weeks, with a very quick turnaround time in implementation, as short as 30 to 60 days to implement that. And when that occurs, it's going to change the salary test from $23,000 and some change to $50,440 annually. So any of our positions that have a starting salary range below that new threshold that are exempt currently, such as our accountants, our librarians, our planners, you know, these are master-degreed individuals, that their salary or starting range is below that new threshold. If the final regs come out with that salary figure, we'll be faced with one of two choices, to either reclassify them to nonexempt and pay them overtime when they work more than 40 hours in a work week, or to reclassify them to nonexempt. We are waiting to move on this initiative until the final regs are published. Who knows, the Republicans might be successful in blocking that. Some think that it might be delayed until 2017, and that $50,000 threshold be something much more affordable, like $35,000 is one that I've figured that I've heard. So we're going to wait. Just wanted to make sure you were aware of it, and that staff does anticipate reclassifying any impacted positions rather than adjusting salary ranges. Second, on the handout, is the pay plan adjustments. We did a market study. We used several resources, as we talked about, at budget retreat meetings, and so the outcome from that, there's quite a few positions that are just toggling a little bit in the pay plan. So I wanted to make sure you were aware of those. A lot of it has to do with us reclassifying our administrative support series, and that's everything from our administrative assistants to our court clerks, our record technicians at the police department, all of those clerical administrative support-type positions, that we were more than 10% behind the market. And so we wanted to make an adjustment in the starting salaries for some of those type of positions. Also, I'm sure that the department heads, as they present to you or talking to you about the new positions that they are asking to have in the new year, I thought it might be helpful for you to have them all in one place and summarize. So they're on the bottom of your handout. In total, there are 14 new positions, with 12 of them being in the police department as part of the sales tax initiative that we've been discussing. And then outside of the police department, only two new positions, one in Parks and Recreation to focus on arts and culture as a recreation coordinator, and then one in Public Works for our GIS systems that are needing assistance. If you want to know how much all that costs, at your leisure, behind that, I have it broken down by position, as well as by department, so you can see the salary and the benefit breakout for each of them, and total cost of all of those changes at $238,000. Questions?
Laura?
I don't have any questions, because you answered most of them right here.
That's good.
Thank you, but I publicly want to thank you and congratulate you on the health fair today.
Thank you.
Having been here at a vendor table the entire time, I was so impressed with the employee turnout, and boy, did they play the bingo game.
That's good. We had about 115 employees at the fair today and 30 vendors, and though it was windy, everyone had a really good time.
They did, and congratulations to your entire planning team.
Thank you.
And the implementation was flawless. Thank you for all the hard work.
Appreciate that, absolutely.
Other questions, anyone? Mike?
I just want to clarify on the cost we're going to incur if that provision goes through.
Uh huh.
Regardless of whether or not they're reclassified or nonexempt, we're still going to incur that cost, right?
Yes, you know, as I talk with our town manager, to maintain that cost or minimize that cost, it simply is, we will reclassify, and we don't work much overtime outside of our police department. To be quite honest, I received an email last night from Richard Parker. He's concerned about his planners and how that will impact going to planning commission meetings and so forth, and Parks and Recreation, you know. The other component to that DOL change is that on an annual basis, they want to automatically increase that threshold, and to stay within 40% of all full-time salary employees throughout the country. And so I would anticipate that each year, we're going to see that figure go up, $3,000 to $5,000. And so next year, that could potentially impact, for example, some of our entry-level manager positions. And I've already had Brian Whitty contact me about his Parks and Recreation Operational Manager, and concerned about, well, how will that work if I have to pay him overtime? And my response was, well, we don't want to work our employees to death either. So if he's working too many hours now, we need to be talking about workloads and adjusting priorities so that we're not working our employees, you know, even exempt level employees more than 45 to 50 hours at the most a week.
I think we've learned a little from the police department and the issues they had with that, so...
Yeah, exactly. We have, of course, they would have the ability to use comp time. If we reclassify them, they work some overtime, they would have that comp available to them. And one thing that we have put into place because of our struggles at the police department to help them manage and get that down, is we have put a cap on comp time for every department outside of the police department at 40 hours. So they can't accrue more than 40 hours, and we would pay them if they work beyond 40 hours banked in their comp time. So that should help with that.
That's an annual figure?
Yes. Well, it's 40 at any given time.
Oh, is it?
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on into Capital Projects, Chapter 9. Kim?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council. I'm Kim Moon, Capital Projects Coordinator here to give you a very brief overview of capital projects and equipment in the proposed upcoming budget year. The town's financial capital policies in the front of the budget book define what capital outlay is. Capital equipment has a cost of $3,000 or more and a useful life of at least one year. Capital projects have a cost of $25,000 or more and a useful life of at least two years. To give perspective to the fluctuations in capital outlay in the past decade, at its highest in 2007, the town's budget included over $53 million in capital, about half of the town's budget that year. Four short years later, at its lowest in 2011, the town's budget included less than $8 million of capital, at only about 13% of the town's budget that year. In the current fiscal year, 1516, capital outlay is $17.4 million, about 25% of the budget. And for the upcoming fiscal years presented this evening, the proposed capital outlay is $19.3 million, also about 25% of the town's budget. That's across all departments and all funds, and you can see this demonstrated in the pie chart in Section 4, Page 4-2, Where Does the Money Go? It summarizes the capital outlay portion of the budget. The Prescott Valley Town Budget has five major funds in fiscal year 1617. The General Fund in Chapter 6 is for general services associated with local government and provides only 7% of the town's capital needs. It also includes $0.5 million from the Yavapai County Flood Control District, which is another 3% of our capital needs. The second major fund is the Enterprise Fund, is for water and wastewater only, and it's funded by customer and user charges and provides about 21% of our capital needs. The third major fund is Capital Improvement Fund in Chapter 9, also known as the Streets' Capital Project Fund, or the 1/3 cent sales tax, is funded by a portion of the town's 2.83 TPT tax. It's only for major street improvements. This fund provides 21% of the town's capital needs. On a side note, I do want to clarify that the portion of the recent 1/2 cent TPT designated for streets maintenance has been placed in the HERF accounts. It is not for new capital. It's only for existing street maintenance, so the 1/3 cent sales tax in Chapter 9 has remained the same. The 1, 2, 3, 4, fourth major fund is the Debt Service Fund in Chapter 8. It's for repayment of town debt, except for enterprise debt, and while it includes repayment of previous capital outlay obligations, it does not include any of the current capital outlay as proposed. The fifth account, the fifth major account, is the Special Revenue in Chapter 7. That Special Revenue section provides about half of the town's capital needs. The Special Revenue Fund is further broken into smaller funds as follows. The Replacement Fund, which is for future replacement of vehicles and major equipment, it's typically transferred into other funds for use. The Highway User Revenue Fund, or HERF, is from the town's allocation of the state gas tax and is only for streets and highways. Notably, HERF funds about 3% of capital needs, because most of HERF is used for pavement maintenance and not for new capital outlay. The UNS Facilities Relocation Fund, that you see in the Special Revenue section, accumulates 2% of the Unisource gas revenues. In addition to franchise fees for annual reimbursement of natural gas relocations in the town's public right-of-way, it represents about 2% of the total town capital outlay. The Donation Fund funds less than 1% of our needs. The Impact Fee Fund, or Development Impact Fee, or DIF, from the construction of new homes and businesses, can only be used for population growth expansion, as detailed in the Infrastructure Improvement Plan. It funds about 1/4 of our capital needs. And the last Special Revenue Fund is the Grant Fund, which is for all grants across all departments, and it provides about 20% of our capital needs. Some of these grants are confirmed at the time of the budget process, and some of them are pending confirmation. Now, I'm going to give you a quick snapshot of capital per department. The Public Works Department has the most amount of capital outlay, is over $8 million for 17 projects and nine equipment purchases, over multiple different funding sources. They, noteworthy highlights this year include three stormwater drainage projects, viewpoint sunset, and FEMA mapping updates with $500,000 from the Yavapai County Flood Control District. Also, the viewpoint drive intersection improvements at Spouse Drive utilizing the 3rd cent sales tax funding source. Expansion of the traffic intersection at Glassford Hill Road and Long Look Drive near Broadshire Mountain High School with development impact fees. And a roundabout at the State Route 89A spur, also known as the highway bypass at Sarah Jane Intersection with grant funding. The Utilities Department is number two of our big spenders, with capital outlay at over $4 million, for 19 projects and nine equipment purchases, wholly funded from the Enterprise Fund, the last chapter, I believe, in your budget book. In just a few minutes, Neil and John will present the various different water funds, including notable projects such as the Summit Water Tank #2 to serve the new Glassford Heights residential area, Victorian Estates waterline rehabilitation, and ongoing participation in the Big Chino Water Resource Project and Comprehensive Agreement #1. The Parks and Recreation Department capital outlay is almost $2.6 million in the coming fiscal years proposed, for four projects and five equipment purchases, including Bob Edwards Park with development impact fees, and the Boys and Girls Club expansion with grant funds. The Community Development Department capital outlay is a little over $1.5 million for four equipment, four small equipment purchases, and a potential grant for Xcela Software, a website for regional civic database coordination. The Police Department capital A is almost $1 million for two building projects and 19 equipment purchases. Highlights include five new police patrol vehicles for new patrol officers from development impact fees, and design, beginning design of the second-floor expansion of the police department with development impact fees. I'm sure Chief Gerald will speak to that in a little more detail this evening. The Library Department capital outlay is about $100,000 for three building projects to change lighting to LED, and two equipment purchases with grant funds. There are also funds budgeted and nondepartmental for library building remediation issues in the amount of $500,000. In the Management Services Department, the IT Division has five equipment purchases totaling $65,000. Magistrate Court has one equipment, one building project, with $26,000 of grant funds. And finally, the Executive Management Department, the TV studio, has one equipment purchase for a little over $8,000. In total, across all funds and all departments, there are almost 60 equipment purchases and 50 capital projects totaling $19.3 million of capital A for fiscal, capital outlay for fiscal year 2016, 2017. If you look in Chapter 9 in the back of the budget book, you'll see the five-year capital plan for equipment and for projects. This is the planning for future capital outlay, where each town department matches their funding projections with their capital needs, and they try to do future planning there. Also in Chapter 9, you will see some specially highlighted detail sheets for many of the capital projects I've mentioned this evening. And I just wanted to thank you for your leadership to fund equipment and infrastructure to keep our community safe, functional, and thriving. Thank you.
Questions, anyone? One question, Kim. Is this going to keep you busy this year?
Yes, sir. I will be very busy. Yes.
Work, isn't it? Work, isn't it? I think you're doing a great job, Kim.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to mention, I'm real happy to see that we're dealing with the Bob Edwards Park and the Boys and Girls Clubs. So it's something I think that we should be proud of, and we expect, you know, I think through the Boys and Girls Club, they're probably utilized more than the, well, I know they are, than the Prescott Area Boys and Girls Club. And so it's a needed added expansion, I think. And then the park, of course, as we talked about yesterday, that's something that, that's personally a priority for me, that we need to catch up on a deferred maintenance of our parks. Even though Bob Edwards is a new park, I think we're going to see progress in both areas, so just wanted to mention.
Thank you, Councilman White. We are meeting with the engineers on getting a scope of services to renew that project currently.
Laura, question?
Just a point of information. I had an opportunity to meet with Bob's wife, Norma Edwards, and she really teared up when I told her that we had money finally budgeted. And obviously, she was overcome and very, very happy. And of course, she feared she wouldn't live to see that, so it's a joyful thing, and I loved being able to tell her about that. And of course, she wants you all to be told how deeply she appreciates that that's going to happen.
Thank you, Councilman White.
Other questions? Mike?
Well, this one came to mind. You mentioned in your presentation about twenty percent of the budget is related to grant funds?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Which I think is great. I think as we hear the various departments come before us, I think all the departments, if I'm not mistaken, have an impact in terms of grant funds, which I think does help us in our endeavors to improve our communities.
Yes, sir. And indeed, I believe the Parks and Rec Department has a new volunteer who's focusing on grants specifically, and he's been spending a lot of time in Volunteer Central doing grants research for us.
Other questions, comments? Anything else, Kim?
That's all.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to number C. Reclaimed, Recharged Water and Water Resources, Recharge Pages ten twenty-one and ten twenty-five. John, Neil, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I thought I'd just go ahead and kneel on the Water Resource Recharge Budget. This is the budget item that covers protecting and augmenting our water supplies for our citizens, and one of the major projects that we work on and make sure that we do every year is we take water from our wastewater treatment plant and recharge the aquifer with it, of course, in a very safe and approved fashion. So with our reclaimed facilities, we have two currently operating. There's not been really any projected change in the budget over last year. It's kind of a work as usual, just trying to keep up with changes, small changes in We also have, of course, our Water Resource Budget for dealing with things like the Big Chino Water Supply. Kim mentioned this just a few minutes ago. We do have an agreement with the City of Prescott over the Big Chino Water Ranch Project, and that is basically an ongoing maintenance program, as most of our focus is on Comprehensive Agreement Number One, which is an agreement between Prescott Valley, Salt River Project, and the City of Prescott. And that is where the big increase in our budget comes from this year, as a pre-approved escalation in the costs up to this year, where we do have a fairly major expenditure there. After this year, the costs will start to decrease quite substantially as we put in all of the elements of Comprehensive Agreement Number One, and that is to monitor the hydrologic conditions of the Big Chino Subbasin, and then build a comprehensive groundwater model that then we build our mitigation components on that allows us then to go in there and safely pump the Big Chino water supply without impacts to the streams. I guess finally, a little note about the Upper Verde River Watershed Protection Coalition. We're the fiduciary agent for the coalition. That is funded through part member contributions, and so our share of the contribution is, I think, fifty-two thousand dollars, and then also with grant funds. The budgeted item in here is actually quite a bit smaller than the coalition's actual budget. We've been very successful in receiving federal grants for programs, but we've found that the federal grants, in many cases, don't come directly into our account. The federal agent remains basically the fiduciary. For instance, we received a million-dollar grant from the USDA, but they kept control of it, and they spend it through their processes at our direction, I guess. So I guess with that, Mr. Mayor?
Questions, anyone? Yeah, Mike?
Yeah, I just had one question. What is the significance this year of the increased expense relative to the Chino?
Yeah, the significance is, when we first started working on Comprehensive Agreement One, the proposal was to put all the money in the pot up front to settle everybody's kind of concerns about working together in the future. We came up with a proposal, because that was like 2012, it was going to be hard for us to come up with, I think, one-point-six or one-point-seven million dollars just to put into a kitty so it'd sit there. So we came up with a proposal that would spread those expenses out over time, according to when we thought we'd be using them. The big expense in this is the well drilling program for monitoring wells and for geotechnical wells to discover what's down deep in the aquifer. And so that program is going forward in sixteen seventeen, and you may see some items coming up in the news as the City of Prescott, who's the fiduciary for that account, accepts some contracts for hydrologic services to get that work done. So it's basically to drill wells, monitoring wells.
Right. Because we've been doing monitoring, I think, last year, year before, and this is a little different because it's wells.
Right, yeah. We've implemented, for instance, the stream flow monitoring aspect of that, a little bit cheaper. Some of the other, what do you call them, weather monitoring aspects and that sort of thing, crop, geotechnical, things like that, have already gotten underway.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Anything else, John?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Neil, you're up.
All right, so I guess we're going to start off talking about the water system here. And a couple of things I want to talk about, just to let you know, you know, one of our goals over the last probably ten years has been to get our water meters converted over from the manual read-style meters to something that's more automated, and we've been doing that, and we did it in phases. And we're still working on it, and it looks like right now we have about four thousand meters left in the system that are the manual read-meters. And so we've been funding that every year at five hundred thousand dollars, which buys us around, you know, seventeen hundred meters. This year, you'll see we're actually funding it at four hundred thousand instead of five hundred thousand. But at that level of funding, within the next two to three years at the most, we should have all of the meters over on to the radio read-style or the, what we call the smart meters. So we still will have a mix of different style meters in our system. Someone will communicate directly with the tower on the hill, and we won't have to do anything. We still have others in the system that are on the drive-by style system where we have to load a laptop into a vehicle and get within a quarter of a mile. But, you know, we will continue to upgrade those as well, so we're making real good Okay, so, and then in the, in the water budget now. Okay, so, of course, one of our, one of our big line items every year, we have a contract with CH2M Hill to operate, maintain our water system. They do our wastewater system as well. For that line item, we've got a four percent increase included in that, in that budget. In talking with CH2M Hill and going through our negotiations this year, one of the main problems that they identified and we concurred with was that we were having a large number of personnel that we were losing every single year. And we were losing them to City of Prescott, we were losing them to other contractors and, you know, just people doing underground work in this community. So we had a lot of personnel turnover, and we wanted to address that. And so with this four percent increase in their budget, not only does it cover, you know, the normal types of things, cost of services that goes up and supplies and materials and all that, but we were, you know, a chunk of that is going to be going to helping to cure this situation with the loss of personnel, so we can maintain a lot more of the, you know, you get the historical knowledge and stuff, you don't want to be losing and retraining people over time as well. And so you'll, you'll see that there in your, in your line item for utility operations. Our power costs are essentially remaining the same. We did not increase that from last year. We've been doing a lot of things in terms of electrical improvements, not only on the water system, but on the wastewater system side as well, putting in variable frequency drives, more efficient motors, and those sorts of things, doing conversions and more, more automated control to reduce power when we don't need it. And so we've been able to maintain that budget at the same level. We did bump up our general equipment repairs from two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to four-hundred thousand dollars. That's not so much that our repair numbers are going up significantly, but we are trying to get them funded out of the correct areas, and so we're budgeting more into the operations budget and a little bit less on the capital side to take care of those and get them properly budgeted in our system. You'll see that on the wastewater side as well when we talk about that. And again, reducing the water meter replacement program, which falls under minor equipment, from five hundred thousand dollars to four hundred thousand dollars. Overall increase on the water side, though, is a one-point-eight percent increase because of the reduction on the, on the water meters. So I don't know if you want to ask any questions about that, or we want to talk about capital related to water as well?
Questions, anyone? Well, go for it, Neil.
Okay. In terms of capital projects for water, we're looking at a couple of major projects, one of them being replacement of a water line that goes down and feeds Victorian Estates and on to Diamond Valley. That line has experienced a number of breaks over the years, and it's been getting more frequent. Some of those areas are in places where we have difficulty getting to when we actually do have to do a repair under an emergency situation as opposed to a planned situation, so our intent is to replace that line. We also have a project that's associated with the Public Works Department and the road improvements for Spouse and Viewpoint Drive, and we have some significant water line relocation work that's going to be associated with that. I think that's kind of the bulk of our capital stuff on the water side. We are also intending to update the water system model, which is a computer model, as well as our twenty-five-year plan for when, basically planning out improvements over the next twenty-five years. So we want to update that along with our sewer model. So what you're going to see is we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars on the water side and a hundred thousand dollars on the wastewater side for this fiscal year coming up, and we are going to do that again for next fiscal year. Ultimately, we're looking at two hundred thousand dollars on the water side, two hundred thousand dollars on the wastewater side, but doing them simultaneously, it's going to be a multi-year type of a plan to get that up to date. The last time we did our modeling and planning on that was back in 2004, 2005, and there have been significant number of changes to the, you know, the community, the developments that have come in. A lot of that has gone along with our planning, some of it has been different from our planning, and so now it's time to update and make sure we know where we're going in the future. So, and then getting over to the wastewater side, I think my comments on this are very similar. No increase on the electricity, that four percent increase across the board that we talked about for CH2M Hill. We did bump up the repairs on this side as well, from two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand to four-hundred thousand dollars. And I think we had to bump our biosolids disposal costs up from three hundred to four-hundred thousand dollars. We have yet to, there are a few, few items with that, we're going to actually still be evaluating that, but that budget will cover us. It may be actually more than we need. Hopefully, we won't have to spend all of that, but we had to bump it up because we're, we're hoping, you know, we were going to cover it, but it may not get quite to there. So I think that's it on the wastewater side. In terms of capital projects, we do have a little bit of the viewpoint, Spouse Drive, where we're doing some work there. We've also got a hundred thousand dollars, I believe, in there for putting together a design which will actually fall into the next year's budget, which will be for upsizing the sewer line in Section Two, which is the one square mile north of basically Unit Nineteen. It's the area between Glassford Hill Road, coming out of Granville, and going over towards Cattle Track. We have a sewer line in there, which needs to be upsized, and so that'll, the capital part of that, the construction will hit, not this coming up fiscal year, but the following. Let's see, I think that probably covers most of what I was going to talk about. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions, anyone?
I do.
Laura?
On the variable frequency drivers, aeration brushes, is that a normal expense, or am I just not remembering for other years that two hundred thousand?
The variable frequency drives, essentially, they control the motors for our aeration system, the aeration brushes. And no, that doesn't happen every year. That part of the treatment plant was installed back in nineteen ninety-three, and so, you know, we do update things from time to time, but those variable frequency drives are out of date, and they have been, you know, failing, plus they're not as efficient as the newer ones. So that is an expense that just happens every once in a while, and now is the time to do that, so.
Well, it's a large chunk, so I wanted to ask about it. But totally understand and support the need to follow through on that expense.
Any other questions, comments? Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, I'm kind of learned a lot, I think, since I've been on the council regarding water and wastewater. And I guess my lack of knowledge in terms of the technology of how that is you, you know, how you make the technology useful in terms of providing those services, I think I've seen a lot personally of progress made and a lot of improvements in infrastructure, which I think just gets back to our, as you were mentioning, planning ahead to try and anticipate what we need in the future. And I think we're in a great position right now, and I don't know how long that'll last as far as capacity, because I know I've asked about capacity before, but I think we're in very good shape, and it seems like you're, you're always kind of on the cusp of trying to get ahead of the game, so I do appreciate that.
Yeah, well, the wastewater treatment plant, we don't know the exact numbers for how long that plant will last until we need to upsize it again. It's based on growth, but I would anticipate that probably we've got fifteen years before we would be looking at another expansion somewhere in that timeframe. On the water side, we're in, we're in good shape in terms of our well capacity versus our, our actual average daily demand and even our peak summer demands. So, yeah, we're in good shape.
Other questions, anyone? Anything else to cover? You got utilities, you covered everything?
I think that takes care of it.
Takes care of it all, huh? Okay, that's C and D. How about we move on to E? Legal, is Ivan here?
Yes.
Oh, there he is. is Ivan here? Oh, there he is. Back to work, Ivan.
If I'd been a snake, I'd have bit you.
That's page six dash 111.
You know, guys, the legal department doesn't change much from year to year. If you, if you look at that budget, it's pretty much the same old thing, year after year after year. We're basically a, a people organization. You know, we don't have a lot of machines or produce things or go, you know, so many miles and, and that sort of thing. We just have people that do things when people bring them things to do. And so, half of our group works on the criminal side and takes, works with the court and, and the police department to deal with the cases that are brought to them. And half of us work with the other departments and sometimes the PD as well, on the civil side. And a lot of the things you've been hearing about the last couple of days, we have a little finger in, you know. We get to give a little advice, put documents together, respond to questions, try to help things out. Some people think we get in the way of those things rather than helping out. I won't comment on that. We, when I, when I mentioned that I would be gone tomorrow, Bill was overjoyed. He said, you know, it would be a party day. So, I don't know, whatever that means, whatever that means. We do try to do a little bit of planning and, and preparation that's a little bit more than just waiting for what's brought to us. We do try to make our organization a little more efficient, especially in the way we handle documents and make sure that our software is up to date and that we're organized as best we can. One of the things we're trying to do is look at our code and think about things that we may need to fix, or go back to some of our to-do lists and make sure we're getting at things that we haven't been able to get to. So, whenever we come to you with what we call a house, housekeeping matter, every once in a while, that's because we've finally reached back and, and dealt with something that we've had on our list for quite a while. We have eight folks in the department. Two of them are ladies that we don't pay for. They're actually paid for by the federal government as part of a program for older workers who want to get back into the workforce. And one of those ladies does mostly criminal work and, and another one does mostly civil. And we're really happy to have them there. And then, of course, we've got Irma, who is sitting in there where Jan used to be and is kind of the linchpin there for the criminal side, with Cindy being the paralegal and doing a lot of the behinds-the-scenes work. And, and then there's Bob. So, and I still think Bob is the best prosecutor in the state myself. And I, I keep worrying that someday he's going to want to go off and become a judge or something, that, you know, that he'll finally just walk in and say, "I'm done. I've, I've done this for enough years." He's just so efficient, so capable, that I don't know what we'd do without him. And on the civil side, you know that I just sit back there and sleep and Stephen does all the work with, with Carol. And so...
We're luxury, by the way.
So, when you guys go by, you know, you, you can always, you can always catch Stephen in conversation. You know, Stephen is a conversationalist and he can talk about so many different subjects. And I'm kind of boring and there's not a lot I know, you know. And, and that's why they kind of keep me in that corner. But as you know, that Carol and Stephen, especially, in particular Carol, she's only part-time. I wish we had her full-time, frankly. She's the best researcher there is. The other day, I asked her about something and I said, "You know, I think I know where that is. I'll go look for it." Within seconds, she had it. You know, I was really kind of mad because I thought I knew where it was. That's pretty much it. You can see that we, we budget $100,000 a year for outside legal counsel. One year, we were fortunate and only spent about $2,000 of that. This year, we're going to spend, we're going to start getting closer to spending most of what we budgeted this year. And a lot of that, we can't control. We just, suddenly, we're dealing with things like a litigation that we didn't foresee, or a bankruptcy, or something along those lines. So, we just keep budgeting that amount every year and hope we don't have to use all of it.
Questions, anyone?
Harvey?
Laura?
I don't have a question, but I want to compliment you that you're going to work on preservation of institutional memory, because I've been really concerned about that, especially if you're a department with all of the ongoing litigations, et cetera, et cetera, over the years and strategies and everything. And so, I'm really relieved to see that you're going to have an opportunity and the will to do that. And I enjoyed catching up with Bob today, working affair. We had quite a long visit.
Did you?
And you're so right. It would be scary if he left.
I don't know what I'd do. I, I, I don't know. I, I, one time, a few years ago, I heard on the radio that a Bob Todd had been hit by a car up in Chino Valley and was in the hospital. And his condition was unknown. And I really thought that was Bob. I really did. And so, when I found out that there's another Bob Todd out there who rides bikes, I'm always telling him, "Be careful, Bob."
Other questions, comments? Mike?
Well, just a comment. I think your characterization, characterization about the legal aspects causing some sort of a ripple effect. But I don't think there's a week or a month that goes by that we don't get some information from you regarding some issues, which definitely helps me quite a bit. And I know it's very valuable information. And it seems like almost daily, we need to have some kind of input relative to how, how that's going to be handled. So, we, I think it's invaluable.
Thank you.
So, probably worth every penny that we, we allocate. And I just don't know why you and Stephen don't have gray hair. You have a little.
I do, no. Believe me, yeah. You want to look closely. There it is. It's there.
We'll be checking in the next few days.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Ivan, you're running a good department and we appreciate that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. If there's no more on that, we'll move on to F. Please, page six, 161. Chief Gerald.
Good evening. Wow, that thing's loud. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I come before you tonight to present the Police Department's fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. And I almost feel like it's Groundhog's Day. We've really been talking about this a lot and over and over again, but I think it's good. And even though we've talked about it kind of ad nauseam or disgusted, I think it's important to touch on some of the highlights and just in an effort to keep our residents informed of what's going to be happening. So, in the proposed budget, we'd like to add eight sworn positions. This is going to help alleviate some of the shortages that we have been experiencing in staffing and allow us ultimately to get more involved in the neighborhoods and with our businesses. It's also going to help us to focus on specific problems such as traffic enforcement. We're also going to be adding several civilian support staff positions. Both of our part-time evidence clerks will become full-time, one records clerk, one community services officer, and one administrative assistant. These additions are going to allow us to accomplish actually several important tasks. First, more efficiently process the large amounts of evidence and property coming into the Police Department. It's going to help us eliminate a backlog of documents that need to be reviewed so that we can determine if they should be electronically stored or simply destroyed. And also, it's going to significantly enhance our outreach efforts such as Block Watch, the Bridge of the Community Event, Coffee with a Cop, Business Liaison Program, a shoplifting reduction effort, and many others.
We really appreciate that.
And then finally, we're going to be able to continue to update our fleet, replacing older, less reliable vehicles. As we all know, police cars are usually the first impression or identifiable symbol that somebody in the community sees. And so, it's important that we make that good first impression. I think it's important that I highlight some of the challenges that I think we're going to be facing this year as well. One of the most significant ones is that the Department of Public Safety is changing the relationship it has with Yavapai County's Pant Group by not participating and also refusing to contribute monetary seizures from drug operations into the county RICO fund, as the partner agencies have done for over, almost 30 years. This decision is certainly going to have consequences if no action is taken. So, the Pant Users Group has decided to become more self-sufficient and therefore not having to rely on others, to continue our pursuit of our goal to keep drugs out of the, out of this county. And we are all working together to make sure that that goal is, is reached. Second one would be maintaining our staffing levels. Several employees are going to be eligible to retire this year. And as you know, it takes almost a year to train new officers. The officers that this council authorized last year have just now been put on the street to work in a solo capacity. So, it takes us a little bit. Which brings me to my third challenge, which is we're having a difficult time recruiting quality lateral officers from other agencies. And this is for many reasons. Usually, the ones that we are getting are above 10 years, which I won't consider because once they come here, we inherit their pension liability. And I don't think that's fair to the people of the community. And secondly, the other reason is that a lot of the people that are coming here are running from something and we, we don't want that either. Another challenge is going to be the different climate that the event center will be bringing to the area for the next couple of years and hopefully far into the future. And I don't mean that to be a disparaging comment on the current management staff at the center, but with a world-class organization like the Phoenix Suns operating and promoting events, there are going to be some unique challenges that we will have to address. As Kim mentioned, the expansion of the Police Department, this is a necessity because we are at capacity, probably overcapacity. In the next probably two years, there's going to be significant expenditures needed in the computer-aided dispatch and records management programs that we currently have in place, because the Prescott Regional Communication Center is in the planning stages of replacing the entire system. As, as we have been for the last several years, continued growth both in population and industry is always going to be a challenge. And then certainly maintaining our services during any potential economic downturn. And so, at this time, I want to take this opportunity to restate our gratitude for the, for the work that this council has done in ensuring that the towns departments are properly staffed and properly equipped to provide the unparalleled service that everyone in Prescott Valley has come to expect. And nowhere is this more evident than the Police Department. When I arrived here two and a half years ago, I found an agency comprised of 64 sworn officers and 14 civilian staff who were very proficient and dedicated to their profession. Despite this, there were many challenges such as inadequate staffing levels in relation to the escalating calls for service and the severity of the crimes we were experiencing, vehicles with high mileage, fading graphics, and mechanical defects. And a command staff, although very devoted to serving, lacked the formal leadership training that I have found to be so valuable. And today, because of the support of town administration and the actions of this council, we will have the Yavapai County's largest and most professional police department with a staff of 76 sworn and 21 support staff. In addition, we've almost entirely replaced the aging, dilapidated fleet that we had. And there's a new commitment to quality training for our command officers that is resulting in substantial career development. And I know that there's been some dissenting discussion regarding the recent sales tax. And however, this council recognized the need to implement the increase based on the unprecedented growth of our town and the fact that our current revenues would not have been enough to maintain good roads or keep this community safe. I have heard that some individuals would advocate repealing this tax. I'm certainly not here to make any political statement, but I do have to say that I have experienced the consequences of severe cuts to a general fund budget. I have seen firsthand what happens to a city when you don't have enough police officers, no money to properly equip them, and no money to provide leading-edge training. For example, I worked right next to the city of Detroit, was once a municipality of almost 2 million people and was considered one of the wealthiest cities in the, in the country. Today, the population is around 600,000 and there are more vacant buildings than occupied ones. It's a dangerous city because they have half the police officers that they need. They are not able to equip the ones that they have, and they certainly cannot provide any quality training. All throughout Michigan cities, including Southfield, where I worked for over 28 years, are struggling with this problem, many on the brink of collapse. And my point is that even great cities can encourage or can encounter severe problems without good leadership. And this council has shown them. We can't let these kinds of things happen in Prescott Valley. It's important to keep reminding our residents what the facts are. First, the tax increase equates to basically 50 cents on a $100 purchase. And second, there is no other source of revenue to support town operations. There's no property tax in Prescott Valley, for Prescott Valley, only the sales tax. So, in the end, I want to thank each and every one of you for your vision, your leadership, and your support. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions, anyone?
Mary?
I'm sorry.
Let the questions go first. I, I just have a comment.
Mary, okay.
We both have statements.
I, I wonder, Chief, if you'd like to take the opportunity to our folks at home and tell them about the community conversation meeting next Wednesday, right here in this building at 6:30.
And I'm, my calendar's so confused. Which one is that?
It's with Matt Forrest and Commander Illustine and probably some of the other officers. We're having a community conversation about crime issues and how citizens can get educated and informed. Well, you know, we will be answering questions of the citizens and it will be here in this room next Wednesday at 6:30.
Okay. And I think we'll also be talking about the heroin initiative coming up.
The heroin is what brought us together to call the meeting, correct?
Okay. And then also with the, the potential for the legalization of marijuana for recreational uses and how dangerous that will be to our community as well.
Those are the topics that citizens are concerned about and cause the community conversation. And I want to commend our department. When Matt Forrest approached, it was just, "Yes, yes, yes. You, you were right there and your officers are making a big difference. And this is a chance for the community to come out and get, be a part of the solutions."
I agree.
But, Mary, no?
Chief, I was, we are doing this, the Citizens Academy with your department, similar to...
Yes.
We're going to do that. Okay. Because I, I really feel that's such a, a great advantage for people to come in and really know and understand a day of a policeman and where we go and the cost, the effects, how long it takes to do reports, all those things. It's like our Citizens Academy that we do. It's amazing program, you know, to understand really what it takes to run a town, a city, you know. So, I really like that. I did the Fire Ops 101 last year and that was quite an education for me in a day of a fireman. That was just amazing. So, the other thing I want to say is that I believe that when it comes to supporting the people that stand on the front lines to protect us, there is nothing greater than what you guys and women do for us when you're willing to lay down your own life to protect a community or people. That speaks volumes. And we need to be right behind you, right next to you, supporting you and your families, not only in the town of Prescott Valley, but in the state and in the country. We should be there with you like you are there for us. Very strongly feel very strongly about that. It's, it's the right thing to do. And you'll always have my support on this. And I'm sure that the rest of the council, I would think, we all feel the same way. We appreciate all of you. And we just want you to know that. Give you the right tools to do the job every day.
Well, thank you. And the Citizens Police Academy is actually in the planning stages right now.
Okay.
Good. Mike had a question?
Yeah, I just had a, a couple. One was, you mentioned the call center is going to be revamped, I guess, in Prescott. Do we incur a cost for that in one way or another?
Oh, yeah.
So, what, what is the...
I think ours is 30% of the share of what happens in PRCC. And it's based on calls for service.
Calls for service.
So, that the, you have the participating members. Most of them are actually fire departments, but you take the participating members, you divide up the calls for service, and then they, you pay proportionately. So, obviously, ourselves and Prescott bear the lion's share of the, the cost. And they're looking at changing not only the, the computer-aided dispatch equipment, which is what they send all the officers on, but the records management side of it, which basically integrates with the computer-aided dispatch side, is also being replaced. basically integrates with the computer-aided dispatch side, is also being replaced. So, for example, if they said, well, they're going to change all the radios and all the communications equipment, but we're going to keep ours, it's not going to work. So they're looking at systems, and I'm sure it's going to incur a cost probably north of $2 million. That's my ask, that's my guess.
So that's next fiscal year, or is that this fiscal year?
No, I think they're looking at it for not this coming year, but probably the year after that. I mean, when you look at what's going on in Prescott, until they get a handle on some of their fiscal problems, I'm not sure why they're even approaching this. I don't find that the system we have right now is really broken, but the biggest complaint is that the fire departments are having a problem and a very difficult time using it and interfacing with it in current times or more modern times. So they're the kind of ones that are leading it, and that's fine. We all have to be able to use it, and we all have to get something out of the system, so.
Well, I was interested too in the shoplifting, what do you call it, the?
Shoplifting reduction plans?
Reduction, right.
Yes.
Because when I looked at police log, I think, you know, there's something on that, well, probably a lot going on in one day. And I just kind of wonder, from the standpoint of the retailers, they have a lot of work in that regard, and they do a good job. But on the other hand, we, as a town and police department, have to respond to that as well.
Absolutely. If you'll notice, I'm not going to mention Walmart's name, but they're a big source of the calls for service in this regard. And so, yes, retailers, obviously, they have an incentive to want to stop as much loss or shrinkage as they can, and so do we, because we, it's almost equates to one person almost a year that we have dedicated to answering calls for service just on retail theft. So we've already started preliminary conversations with them, and that's coming out of our Support Services Division, and we are trying to work with them. There are some national programs that different places have tried, and we're going to be trying to implement those. And then, once we get the community services officer, who's, actually, we already have her, and she's very versed in a lot of these things, and we're really fortunate to have her, and that's Traces Gordon. And so she's going to be able to really lead us in this direction so we can help reduce the calls for service there.
Well, it is a big problem, you know, there's no doubt about it. The other thing I wanted to ask about, because I think we've been lucky, and it's always been my fear, as I keep mentioning, that there'll be an issue or an incident someday that we can't respond to unless we do gear up. And I think we've been very lucky, and I've noticed more so now in the last couple of months, the fact that we are maxed out, where I think sometimes at a Level 2 designation. So I think we're lucky that we're able to impact that hopefully pretty soon.
Yes, on the activity log, if you notice, and if it says Level 2, what that means is, Level 2 is that we are now stacking calls. So basically, we are going from serious call to serious call, anything like dog barking, neighbor complaint, or, you know, noise complaints, things like that, we're just stacking them because they're a low priority at that point. And then, when we get done doing the serious crimes, and we kind of get things cleaned up, and it calms down a little bit, now we'll go back and we'll start cleaning up these other calls. When we get to Level 3, that's really bad, because what that means is that we are all tied up on something.
Right.
That even if there's a school shooting, there's nobody to go. We cannot break away from what we're doing to even go to something that's serious. Now, that does happen from time to time. We get Level 3 sometimes. But in that regard, then, we notify the Sheriff's Department and/or the tribe and/or Prescott and ask them to help us.
Because I did want to mention too, I got a video from a CYFD board member regarding a fire in LA yesterday, and it was a residential fire. And the video lasted 22 minutes, and it took, you know, and this is response time, and it's always important, took the fire department, I think, probably 10 to 15 minutes before they showed, and that created a situation where one house, but not one, two, three houses went up because there was nobody there. And I noticed as well that the police department responded after the fire department in terms of response. So, you know, I don't think that's something we want to see in our community, and I'm grateful that we have the resources to kind of gear up for what we can anticipate right now.
Yeah, and I really, I already talked to Mr. Tarkowski about this, we have some challenges when it comes to the future funding or staffing levels. So, for example, we're going to hopefully get these eight officers, they're going to start first of July, they'll enter the academy in August, they'll graduate around Christmas of this year, and then they'll be back hopefully on the streets by April, May, April, May of next year. Well, I know of at least four people that are eligible to retire starting July 1st, and one of them is very, I'm not going to say his name tonight, but it's very likely that he's going to go, and it's a 20-year veteran that we're going to be losing a lot of experience from. But the problem is, so I hire July 1st, this person doesn't leave until September. Now, I, there's nobody, I only can't even put anybody in an academy if I had anybody until January, and then you're just extending that cycle. So those are challenges, and we're certainly attempting to keep on top of them and address them.
Mayor.
Great.
Yes, if I could, Mayor and Council, the challenge that Brian just mentioned is one that every police department in the world has, and that is turnover, and also the time to get the appropriate amount of training. Been a concern for the 27 years I've been here. Okay, somebody leaves, and it takes a while to fill it, which is why you end up with a police officer count that is at the highest level in the history of the town of Prescott Valley, okay, with the hirings that are proposed in this budget, the highest level per 1,000 citizens we've ever had. Okay, and it's very important, and Brian and I have talked about this, that during the recession, all of the professional journals will show that all police departments across the country had to get back to the basics, and they got rid of a lot of the things that were good, but they weren't the most important. In other words, they got more officers, sworn officers, out on the street doing patrol, and they had to take some of the proactive things away. And all of the professional journals will say that, and to some extent, that was a cleansing process for all departments to get back to the basics, get focused on the street and on crime. And I will have to compliment our police department in that. Our crime rate is incredibly low for a community our size, very low. Our response times are phenomenal, and, you know, quite frankly, most communities you go to that are our size larger, they don't come close to the high-quality response times that we have. This year, we focused on officers, we'll get those integrated. I know that there was conversation when we were talking about the police department during the two budget retreats, and a desire by you to get into the very tepid waters of body cameras. Okay, next year, that is programmed. We've concentrated on personnel this year. Next year, bringing in some of that technology is where we intend to go. So I just wanted to put that out there, that we couldn't do it year one, and Brian's going to be producing a plan that will, number one, buy down our comp time, buy down our general leave time, because we all heard those concerns from our officers, they didn't have the opportunity to take their vacation, and they had high comp accruals. These new officers are going to help the department get those down to a manageable level. You heard Karen talk about 40 hours on comp time. We have many officers that are well above that number, and so we're going to work it down. And then we'll be able to implement all of this, and next year, meaning '17, '18, body cameras will be talked about and budgeted.
Laura?
Chief, since you brought up a discussion of repeal of the tax increase, I want to share with you not what I think. Last night, I had a, two conversations with Citizens Academy people, two gentlemen, and today at the health fair, I was approached by a lady who is currently attending the Citizens Academy, and that's what they wanted to talk to me about. And so I will just kind of combine the conversations of the three, and they said, no way in hell would those citizens tolerate that happening, that they're so relieved that we're taking care of our police department and our streets. So I want you all to know, we have citizens out there that understand why we did it, what the driving need was behind it, and I was very humbled by those three citizens. One of them's only been here a year, and they were, he in particular, got a little worked up. It was kind of fun to talk to him because he cared and he was passionate. So I want you to know that you have a lot of support, and hopefully that very quiet majority out there will speak up.
Yeah, I completely agree with you, Councilwoman. The, I'm not, and I'm not saying these things, again, to make any kind of political statement, but I live in this community as well, number one. And number two, I have seen and witnessed people giving false information to other members of the community in an effort to be the anti-tax people. And you can have whatever position you want, that's not what I'm here, I'm not advocating one way or another. You can have whatever position you want, but please bring the facts. And so when I hear people presenting this in a way that it's, you know, it's wasteful, it's this, it's that, it's only for this, but that's what they said it's for, it's not going to go to that, that's not factual. And I want the people in the community to know that these people are out there. And so if you get these, this misinformation, I just want to make sure that they get the other side of the story, and I appreciate that. And then also, I want to comment real quick, two things on Mr. Tarkowski's points. We both agreed that next, or this year, the focus was police officers, that's what we needed to get. When technology is able to be obtained, great, we'll get it, and we'll take it, and we'll use it properly. But this year's priority was on police officers. The other thing was that in the past, police officers in departments and communities have gotten a little bit out of focus on what their primary purposes are. My mandatory purpose is responding to calls for service and investigating crimes. I have to do that, and we will. But if I can do anything that's in a proactive way to reduce those calls for service and reduce the need to investigate crimes, I am certainly going to do it, and I think having police officers in accounting doing payroll, or washing cars, or working, or sitting in an airplane hangar somewhere that never gets used, yeah, that's completely wasteful, and we needed to get back to the basics and focus on what we need to do. And then the last thing I want to talk about is overtime. We've been making significant strides in managing our overtime, but one of the practice, one of the prior practices was, there was no tracking of what overtime was being paid or spent on. So, for example, and I'll tell you, in our last overtime report, there were two items. The number one category for overtime expenditures was holiday pay. Based on agreements between the town and the police department with police officers, we have very little way or very little means to control that. It is what it is, I can't, there's holidays and people have to work. The second area was report writing, and that's unacceptable. And we will make efforts now that we know where money is being spent and how it's being spent. Now I have a greater ability to be able to manage those numbers and come up with a true liability of overtime for a given year within reason.
Good. Mary?
Oh, and the other thing in regards to having more officers, you know, I think it's very important, number one, for us to be able to have our officers out there knowing the community and the community knowing the police department. And the other thing is being proactive. We are already, we've been growing for the last few years very well. We are going to continue to grow, and we're trying to be proactive here to make sure when we get our calls that we have availability, the right amount of officers to be able to service the people, and know that they have that safety, you know, in their community, and they can count on us. Those are things that are important, need to be proactive, so.
Yes, and we appreciate your support.
Marty?
Yeah, first of all, I've always been impressed by how well our police department performs their duties. We have a great police force, and it's really nice. But I've also noticed that since you have gotten here, some of the changes you've implemented, how you've shifted things around, they are even performing better than they had before, and like I said before, they were doing a great job. I'm very happy to see that you're going to be increasing a block watch. That is extremely important for a number of reasons. First of all, it helps you because it puts more eyes in the community, and every year we have the National Night Out, and that puts the police in direct contact with all of the block watch communities, and it gives the block watch people a chance to ask questions of the police because they will be at a party that's organized by all of them. And I'm also very happy to know that you're going to be implementing the Citizens Police Academy. Having gone through it, that is, that's a great program. Yeah, and again, it lets people know what you do, because a lot of what the police officers do is not seen. You know, the only time you see them is either when they pull you over, or, you know, you're a victim of a crime, and, you know, the detectives have to come in and investigate. So there's a lot that happens, and the tours that they give you during the Citizens Academy, it's very informative and instructive, so it's really nice to see. So keep up the good work. I also am impressed by the fact that you're keeping up with, you know, what's happening in the future. I mean, you're looking far down the road. You're not just looking into next year or the year after, you're looking five and 10 years down the road. Technology changes. Every time I hear Microsoft is putting in a new operating system, I know that that puts, you know, that changes so many different things in so many different ways. Plus, you know, there's always the technology that's coming for police officers to use, cameras. They're getting smaller, you know, and better, you know, but it's extremely beneficial, so I'm glad to hear that. We're going to be looking at that over the next couple of years. So keep up the good work, gentlemen, and I look forward to bigger and better things from the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and to your point, thank you for your kind words, first of all. But I got to tell you, I really haven't done that much since I've been here. What I brought was a different perspective. This is the, by far, the best staff I could have ever even imagined working for. If I could take a crayon, cartoon, and make up my own characters and tell them what I wanted them to do, I couldn't have asked for anything better. It's the most professional, dedicated staff I've ever seen in my life, as evidenced by Deputy Chief Edelstein being able to do all my presentations on the budget enhancements that we were proposing this year. He comes, and he's a professional, and he's intelligent. I couldn't have asked for a better second-in-command because he's not a yes-man. He challenges me, we question, he questions me, we discuss things, and it's a joy to have him and the rest of the staff that works really so hard to get things done. So I brought a different perspective maybe, and asked them to look at things maybe sometimes a little bit differently, but they're still the ones that have risen up and done that and been very, very effective in doing it. So thank you.
Good. Other questions, comments? Chief, anything else?
No, sir.
By the way, thank your department. They are doing a super job.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on then to number G, debt service, page 8-3. William Kope, Management Services Director. Bill, you're up.
[laughing]. Got to follow police, I can always follow police. Last section for the town's budget is debt service, and chapter four, I get to my right I had my page all marked, and then I had to wait for the chief to finish.
Sad story.
I'm on chapter, chapter 8-2, page 2. The summary page, basically, this is kind of what you see is on the graph on the bottom. The point I really want to refer, discuss on this page is that you can see the list of all of our debt service, not only enterprise funds, but also the governmental funds, and the thing by principal and interest. And basically, the maturity date is there in the middle, but we're at $60 million right now, over $60 million in total debt. So for our organization, you know, a few years ago, I would come before council, and we were at, you know, in we were at, you know, eighty, well, probably 10 years ago, we were over $100 million. So we are down to $60 million. So I think we're, we're definitely going in the right direction, through refinancing, paying off some of our debt. You know, this is the lowest we've been in for quite a few years, so I just wanted to point that out. On eight-four, this section primarily just focuses with the governmental debt, which is really the debt associated with, you know, our, our street projects, the building of this library, the Civic Center, Police Department. Those are the things that are covered in governmental municipal debt. The enterprise funds, which has their own debt related to the wastewater treatment plant and the water system, those are included in the enterprise funds and are not listed here. So you don't see their, their principal and interest budget here, they would be in the enterprise funds. But this kind of gives you the list, and again, it's a relatively, in my opinion, relatively short list. We have basically five different debts payments that we'd have to make, but it's for four buildings, for the most part. On the second page, you can see the, the private placement and the COPs. Those were the bonds that were issued for the library. So the COPs were the original bonds that were issued, and then last year, we came before you, we refinanced the debt, we got it down to a much lower interest rate. But for the next couple of years, you're going to see these two payments right next to each other until we pay off the old COP bonds, and then it'll just go to private placement. So that's what you kind of see too there. Again, everything on eight-point-four is some debt that's been on our books for quite a few years and have various payoff schedules. The very top one on eight-four, next year is going to be our last payment, so that's for the Civic Center and Police Building will be finally paid off, so those will be free and clear, so those will be all paid off.
That's a wonderful one.
Yeah, we have a few, we actually have a few of those, even like on page eight-six, we no longer have any assessment, any special assessments for sewer or street assessments that we have to collect for at this point, so those are all paid off. You know, the old purchase, even though the water is not included in here, but the old purchase, or the purchase of Shamrock way back in the day, next year, I think, is one of our final payment for Shamrock, so the water system will be completely paid off, and so we'll have no debt related to the water system at that point until, you know, Neil gets his hands on it, but, you know, then we'll probably incur some more debt. So that's all I basically have as it relates to debt service, so if there's any questions, comments regarding debt, I'll try to answer them for you.
I think your, this worksheet is pretty obvious, but anyone have any questions or comments? Larry?
I do have a comment, and, you know, we've been working very hard through the recession and before that to go ahead and, and bring our debt down. And I think that town staff ought to be applauded, Bill and his crew, for accomplishing so much of that through either the refinancing or, quite frankly, the, the end of the term. But I do just want to caution that we will probably be coming to you sometime during the course of this new fiscal year to take a look at a couple of, of things that may require us going out into the bond market. One being the addition to the police station, and another thing that I won't get specific on that may fall into place as it relates to water.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? Yeah, just keep paying them down, Bill.
We try, we're trying.
If there's no more on that, let's move on to H, community facilities districts. Again, you're up, Bill. Stone Ridge community, number one, I guess.
Do the Stone Ridge?
That's three, the last one in the book. Unless you want to start with the first one, what do you want to do?
I'll go East Ridge. Want to just go in order?
Is that East Ridge you want to work away through?
East Ridge, it's, it's actually, there's between East Ridge and Raven Ridge, I'm not sure which one is the easiest one to talk about. So I wish I could do them kind of together because these are two assessment districts, very good assessment districts. We've had no issues with, with payments on, on, on East Ridge, since I'm taught to talk about East Ridge right now. I guess the main point of East Ridge I'd like to make is that we basically have this budget year, and then the following budget year, and we're done.
Awesome.
So East Ridge, so when I first started here, it was probably like second year that we were into the East Ridge project, and I thought, I looked at that, I go, will this ever end? And here we are, about two years out, and it will be over, completely paid off. Again, it's been a great district, it's an assessment district, so it's worked out very well. So with that, I'll just answer any questions that you might have.
Parkway, number one.
Okay, Parkway. Hopefully everyone has a revised page, there was a little formula, or there's a number that was still included in it from last year, so I had to clean it up a little bit, so there's a new, a new one, a new page to be inserted in your budget book. Unfortunately, East Ridge, or I'm sorry, Parkway, Advalorum District, the assessed value went down again for the, I don't know how many years in a row now it's gone down. It went down approximately, it's at least, it's going down less. It's went down 1.7 percent. Last year was 4 percent, this year is 1.7 percent. So, you know, I'm hoping now at this point that it has bottomed out at this point. I said that last year with that 4 percent, I thought maybe it bottomed out, but it did go down again. So one thing we are doing a little bit different this year is that I am adding, you can see a contribution. I am putting in $50,000 for contributions. That is really, can be a combination of many different things. If the town council wants to donate money or contribute money to the, to the Parkway, then we have that authority because there is a little bit of money budgeted in town's budget. If some of the nonprofits want to contribute toward the CFD, that's what this would be used for. So as a result of putting that money into the, the budget, basically their tax rate dropped over $3. But, so we're proposing that we put $50,000 into the budget this year. It is really at council or the board's direction whether or not I leave it in. But based on having the $50,000 included, their tax rate will go down to $15.04 compared to $17.18 last year. If it wasn't in there, actually it would have gone up even higher than the $17.18 that was in there last year. So my recommendation and with discussion with Larry is that we put the contribution in and, you know, lower the rates for the property owners that are within the district.
And then, and very important to understand, this is still a decision to be made by you. This is also there, as you are well aware, there's a number of balls up in the air at this point in time, and so we have the ability, if you direct us to, decision a long way from being made and/or discussed. All it does is give us flexibility, and that's probably important.
Okay, let's go on to the Pronghorn, ask this question.
Pronghorn. The assessed, we'll start with the assessed value. The assessed value actually increased by 11 percent this year in Pronghorn. We still do have a, you can see up in the revenue section, there's a successor in standby contribution charge is one of Ivan's famous terms that he's come up with, but that's basically when any permit is pulled, there's an additional, basically a subcharge or additional charge added to the permit. At some point, that amount is, will be going away because, I don't know how many more, do you know how many more lots are to be built out in Pronghorn?
I don't have the exact number, you're looking at two-fifty.
Yeah, so we got a few more years, and, but again, once this number starts reaching, once a project starts reaching build-out, this revenue amount will, will go away at that point. I am proposing that basically the lower, right now, I am proposing for the upcoming fiscal year, a tax rate of $2.81. Last year was $3.12. So again, it's, it's another decrease of approximately 10 percent. So most of the residents, again, should see a decrease in their property tax bill, assuming that, you know, unless it's a new build, which is the first year on the tax roll, then they're going to see a larger increase. But if you have an existing home, you should see a decrease in your tax bill.
Okay, and, and right now, if we could, just for a second, let's talk philosophically about these CFDs. One thing that we've been doing for all these years is making sure, or trying our darndest to make sure, that everybody is paying the same thing they did the previous year. I don't care about tax rate. I don't care what the assessor says a house is worth or not worth. I care about how many dollars are coming out of a person's wallet when they get their tax bill. So Bill is very concerned, it needs to be, about rates. I'm very concerned that we adjust the rate up or down to make sure that we try our darndest that people in a CFD will pay a level payment. Okay, so if they're paying $100, for example, a year in a tax, our job is to keep that number as level as we can. It's not an, an exact science, but nevertheless, that's our goal, that's been our philosophy, and we, we come to you with these new rates with that same philosophy. If they paid 100 last year, we're hoping that it's going to be 100 this year, you know, plus or minus five bucks. That's the goal.
Good. Any other questions?
The problem, only me and Larry have this discussion, I think, every year about this. The problem is that when you're looking at an increased assessed value within a district, anybody who has a larger, if their assessed value goes up more than what the district average amount is, then they're going to see a larger amount. If it goes up less, so the, the payment's going to fluctuate. Everyone is pretty much going to see a change. We try to maybe monitor or limit the change, but everyone is going to probably see a change in their tax amount. Some may see a little bit more, some may see less. So, you know, we're, we're trying to work it out a little bit. The problem is, when this increase in assessed value, I don't know how much is actually due to new homes, or, and what's due to the increase in the actual assessed value of existing homes. So that's why we kind of play around with the rates a little bit, but we make sure that we have enough money to pay the debt service, and make sure that everyone is, should stay relatively close.
The nicest thing is when it gets to zero.
Yes. We've got a few years on these, though, unfortunately.
Mr. Mayor, I was just wondering, you said it was 14 percent assessed value went up for Pronghorn?
Eleven. Eleven percent for Pronghorn.
Because I'm, I'm interested to hear that, as well as what the tax rate is this year versus previous as you did.
Oh, last year was 312.
No, I got that, but I'm saying, the others.
Oh, yeah.
Address that as well.
Sure. Oh, you bet.
And the reason that we have this conversation is that you will recall that during the run-up in the valuation, in other words, prior to '07, oh, everybody was sitting back and, oh, my house is now assessed at, you know, this, this really inflated number. There were some governmental entities around the state that would go to the paper and say, we're not raising the tax rate this year. Okay, and they were all proud, and they'd puff up their chest, but when people got their tax bill, they were ending up paying 25 percent more out of their pocket. But they were, we didn't raise the tax rate. Well, with the assessed valuations going up dramatically every year, during the bubble, they were right, they didn't raise tax, but because the assessed valuation went up, people were really suffering because they were pulling a lot more money out of their wallet, which is why I like to focus on what's the money out of the wallet. I'm not concerned about rate going up and down because that doesn't tell me how much is coming out of the wallet.
I think that's a good philosophy. Any other comments? If not, let's move on to Prong, what is it, Quailwood, next?
Quailwood. Assessed value in Quailwood went up 12.9 percent over the previous year. This year, I am proposing a tax rate of $3.13 compared to $3.58 last year. So again, and a lot of that is due to the fact that there's a growth, but we also have a developer out there that is actually contributing based on the number of remaining lots that he actually owns. This year, I'm projecting 70, over $70,000 last year because it's, he calculates it at the end of, basically in June of every year, and it's based on the number of lots that are still available. So I do estimate, based on my calculations, of how many lots I think are going to be left, but then the actual calculation will be from the developer. Last year, I calculated 80,000, it came in at 100, the contribution was like $110,000. So we still have a few more years left for the developer to contribute toward the, for the town, or toward the Quailwood CFD, so we're going to utilize some of that money and bring down the rates a little bit.
Good. Questions, anyone? Now, let's move on to Raven Ridge.
Not much to say about Raven Ridge, other than it's, basically, you see the dollar amount, but yet we have until 2024, basically, to pay this off. I think there is probably a handful lots that are still left up there that are paying an assessment, but this number is a little bit high, we don't have a new number, we just had a, an auction that occurred with some of the, a property owner up there that had numerous lots did not pay their assessment on time. So we auctioned their, their properties, their assessment, paid off a lump sum amount, and so that amount then will be applied toward our existing debt service. So the actual number will probably be significantly less than this once we get the new debt service schedule, which hasn't come in yet. But again, this, this number is, this district is a, is a very good district though still, up in the country club area, and we have, like I said, probably 10 or 12, maybe 15 assessments left. But until they either pay it off, or until someone, they sell the house, and then someone buys it, you know, it could be around till 2024. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, anyone? If not, let's move to Southside, number one.
Southside, another assessment district on Highway 69. I think everyone is very well aware of the, all of the different circumstances related to Southside. We have one property owner who basically has defaulted on their property, have not, has not, and probably will not ever make another payment on their property. So at this point, and this was years ago, the board stepped in, town council stepped in and said that any future assessment payments related to this property will be made by the town. So basically, the town advances money to Southside, Southside pays the money. We're hoping that when the property is sold, the town then will recover its money. So that's, that's the goal. But the assessment payment for this property is in a ballpark of $55,000 a year. It's one of the, it's probably the largest piece in the Southside CFD. But, but I am budgeting based on the fact as if all of the property owners are paying their assessment. So that's what you see, you don't see any town contribution or anything like that, it's through assessments because we anticipate getting our money back.
And, oh, happy day, we have some very recent, serious inquiry about the purchase of that property. Yeah, we've been waiting for this for a long time, so it is a, a thing in process, and, you know, there'll probably be a couple of bumps along the way, but that property will sell and we're going to recover.
Good. Questions, comments? Let's do the last one, which is called Stone Ridge.
Stone Ridge. Assessed value went up 8.4 percent over the previous year. This year, I am proposing a $2.59 tax rate.
Oh, my God.
Last year was $2.74, so it's decreased by about 5.5 percent over the previous year. There is, low you can see, we, we're still going to have the rental income, which helps toward the debt service payment, we apply that rental income toward that. So, but overall, again, largest CFD in assessed value within a town, so it's been, it's still a good district. The rates are going down, I think, which is what, is everyone is, likes to see, so, and hopefully it'll continue. But with that, I'll just answer any more questions at Councilman.
Questions, anyone?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I remember, I wasn't, I just recently had gotten on the council, and I remember these districts, and this Stone Ridge was over $4, and I remember this place was full. And it, this is such a good, good feeling to sit here today and see these rates and the accomplishments, and how the people, you know, are doing and were, and doing better in their houses and everything. It's an amazing, and it's such a good feeling. It's an amazing, and it's such a good feeling.
Yeah, it's great for all of them, actually, to see all the rates. Our original, when we first started this, it was $3.30 is what we told them.
Right.
So it's $3 for debt service, 30 cents for O&amp;M. Now, all of them are below 3.30, so it's kind of good to see.
Yeah, it's very good, very good.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Council, thank you very much. That concludes your budget presentations for the year before us. And we do appreciate all the hard work that started back in November, and you take a look at it, we're not that far away from November again, so the process will start. But thank you very much for your indulgence, thank you for your confidence in staff that, that we are doing what you are asking us to do as you set policy, and thanks to Bill and his team, they've done a great job.
So far, I would say that the budget presentations have been very good, very thorough.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very positive, so appreciate the good job, Bill. Meeting is adjourned.